All righty, good morning, everyone. I'm gonna call our meeting to order and ask that you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. If you have one of these, you may want to put it on silent. Meeting documents are in the end by Commissioner Heiburger. And if you need a listening device, ask one of the county staff, they can assist you with that. And if you've seen my pen, I found it. We'll start by looking for a motion to approve our agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Look for a motion to approve our commission meeting minutes for August 17th, 2021.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Bender, second by Heiburger. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Bills to be paid in the amount of $586,611.90.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Motion in a second. Comments?
Mr. Chairman, I just would say that last week we were over $7 million. This week we're just over $500,000 or just under $600,000. Anyway, that's my comment.
All righty. Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. We have reports from the abandoned cemetery board meeting minutes for July 2021. The auditors account with the county treasurer for July 2021. And we're gonna move on to personnel actions and look for a motion to approve routine personnel actions.
Motion to approve.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning. Carrie Dever from Human Resources. I have a fairly long list for you today, starting out with a request to approve a couple of employee handbook changes. One is to section 14.8 and the other is to section 15.4. One is a clarification on personal credit card use and the other is extensive revisions to our parking section of the handbook that Joe Bosman and Melinda Starley worked extensively on. And I believe they're here if you have any questions on the parking. And Ben is here if you have any questions on the purchasing change.
Questions, Carrie. So we got the employee handbook updates. I'd look for a motion to approve those updates to the employee handbook.
Is my motion?
Second.
Motion by Bender, second by Barth. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Those updates are effective August 24th, 2021.
Motion to approve the policy and procedures manual update. Second.
Second. Comments, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. And then logo apparel, logo wear apparel.
Logo wear.
Yeah.
You've seen, of course, that there are different departments that have different Minnehaw County logo items. Some of those departments require staff to wear them or they have uniform requirements and they have established processes for doing that. The other areas, there really is no established process. There's no consistency in how we go about that or really any specific authorization for when those purchases are allowed. So what's in front of you today is a request to establish those procedures for departments that don't currently require uniforms of staff. Has a couple of good benefits. First, for those department heads who want a consistent look for their staff or to offer their staff the opportunity to wear county logo on a specific day, they could do that. The other benefit is by going ahead and having a uniform process for that and using one vendor to purchase those, we're hoping we can access deeper discounts. So if you're supportive of this concept, what we're asking for is your approval on a couple of handbook changes to incorporate that, a new section of the purchasing policy to incorporate processes and procedures for that, and then a contract with Midstates branding. Just to clarify, I don't think we're actually gonna reach the threshold of purchasing that would require us to go out and bid, but just in case we were to approach that in the future, we did go ahead and use our processes that allow us to use another government bid to do that.
Questions? I have one. Commissioner Barth is always looking very stylish in his county commission logo wear. I'm a little jealous. If I wanted to buy logo wear, could I pay for it myself off of this contract?
That's a great question. One of the benefits of the vendor that we identified is that it'll allow departments, out of all the items that were selected, each department head can choose what they want to offer staff. And then a little store will be turned on for staff to go ahead and purchase it. After they've hit their two items or five items, whatever's relevant under contract, the store will be shut down and then will become taxable. So any employees who actually want to purchase something on their own outside of what they be provided can do that. So, yes.
Okay. So, great answer.
Yeah.
Other questions, concerns? So I'm looking for a motion to approve it for.
Bender.
authorized.
I'll make a motion to approve and then I have a comment after.
I'll second.
I just want to thank Carrie and the team that worked on all of these policies. I mean, we kind of breezed through them and approved them, but I know that some of these have been in the works for months and that there is a lot of work and thought that goes into them. So thank you very much. You make it easy for us to breeze through it and approve them because you guys have put in so much work in advance thinking through the issues.
Thank you. I mean, yes, I want to just particularly give a shout out to Carol Muller and Ben Kite who sat in on those. And then there are other departments who are part of the conversations about what do we provide, what colors, and a lot of the details. So thank you for your gratitude for that.
All righty. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. And the last personnel action.
The last item we have for you is a request to reclassify a current seat or elections position to a senior elections technician from a pay grade 12 to a 14. The reason for this is really to allow additional cross-training in a couple of key positions of the county. Ben Kite as the auditor has come in, evaluated his organizational structure and sees a benefit to having these two positions really cross-trained. The titling is a little tricky, but this would allow basically the commission recorder position and the senior elections technician position to blend their responsibilities. So there is deeper cross-training. Another big benefit of that is it helps offset somewhat that huge workload increase that happens during elections years because those responsibilities would be shared by two people. Ben is here if you have any additional questions, but the request is to reclassify to the same level as the commission recorder.
Questions?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Barth, second by Benega. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. All right, thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
We have no applications for abatement, no notices and requests. We have no planning and zoning notices or petitions for compromise of lien. And that brings us then to the opportunity for public comment. At least one individual. Mr. Colby, welcome.
Good morning. They say a criminal always returns to the scene of the crime. I, it's been a couple of years since I've probably been here just to give you advice. It's free and it's worth every cent you're paying for it. I congratulate you on keeping out of the media. I am disappointed in one thing. I would think that this auspicious crew would by this time have come up with a means of support for county government that the state would approve because this has always been a root hog and die operation. I have offered suggestions in the past and this is, I think, a fee that could be instituted for the county in a calling it an emergency life and property fee. You know, we have used the technology in our assessment for property because farmland is not consistent in the quality in the same 80-acre patch. So it's been assessed on its productivity. How about the volume of a structure and be assessed on the volume to support the fire, the police, and the emergency response? And that would be instituted on all structures in the county, churches, schools, everything because they all rely on police, fire, and emergency protection. And with the technology that we have today, I mean, look what we did with the property for farmers. I mean, there's a five-acre plot in the middle of a farm or in the middle of an 80 acres that we assess differently than the rest of it around it. We could have a technology would be able to tell us what that volume is because the larger the structure, the more likely it is going to need police, fire, et cetera. And that would be a fee because not everybody would pay it. It's only those that have that. If you're a renter, you don't pay it. It's the property owner. I've also been a supporter of ambulance being supported, the rural ambulances being supported by gas tax because our visitors that come to our state pay South Dakota gas tax. And if we use the gas tax money for cleaning the roads of snow or mowing the roads of grass, why can't it be used to support emergency response to like I-90, all the interstates and all the state roads? I'm not saying the county roads because the emergency response, the rural ambulances, are those that were instituted for the protection of the people in that community. They never anticipated having to take care of somebody from Ohio who had a rollover over at Hartford. And then when you license marijuana, I have no objection to medical marijuana, but where I've been and seen people doing it, they say medical marijuana and you are capable of getting a permit to use marijuana if you have a hangnail or a paper cut. I mean, it's not medical. And that's a place that you'll have to worry about how to institute such things. And I would encourage each and every one of you to run for a city or state government. Some of you have already been in the city and I think you've found out you do more budgeting here than you ever did in the city. And if you budget here, you've done more than most of the legislators ever do at the state. They get a budget, they look at it, and they have to approve it in a week. You've spent time here. And I would say one thing, if you do the logo wear, I would buy it with one stipulation. Underneath it, it says Emeritus. Thank you.
Mr. Colby? Mr. Colby? We didn't get you to introduce yourself, so.
Robert Colby, citizen of Minnehaw County for, since 1970.
Thank you, sir. All righty. Anybody else here for public input? Seeing nobody jumping up to do that, we are gonna move on to regular business. We have a public hearing and second reading on rezone 2102 to consider it an amendment to the 1990 revised zoning ordinance from Minnehaw County for rezoning from A1 Agricultural District to the I-1 Light Industrial District. Mr. Hookman.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm Kevin Hookman from County Planning Department. Today's rezoning hearing is for a property that is right next to Valley Springs. I'll show you the map here. It's on kind of the northwest or northeast corner of the city. The rezoning request is to go from A1 Agricultural District to I-1 Light Industrials District. The petitioner would like to build a warehouse and a trucking business on the property. This item was heard before the Planning Commission at the July 26th Planning Commission meeting and voted unanimously for recommendation of approval. I'll just point out in some of the photos here, some of the things we discussed. You'll see that it's a vacant parcel right now and it is in the industrial zoning district, but I will point out this one right here is a little bit of an oddity for being so close to an industrial zoning district as a residential house. In the rural area of the county, these structures that are commonly referred to as shouses, which is a shed with an attached house, are pretty common and this shouse is located right next to existing industrial and proposed industrial now. Notices were sent to all the surrounding property owners and the city of Valley Springs and we received no opposition to the proposed rezoning. So it likely will fit in well with any future zoning of industrial zoning district. But you'll see, this is the other neighboring property here, another warehouse project with trucking companies. So I'll go back to the main map here. So the county board of commissioners may vote to amend, approve, or deny the proposed zoning ordinance, which is the rezoning 2102. And this is a public hearing, so we'll invite the public to speak to it. Is there any questions?
Thank you, Kevin. I guess I just, one quick one. What is that shouse zoned? Is that ag?
The shouse is zoned A1 agriculture. The property to the immediate north, this is still zoned A1 agriculture and a lot of what's in the north part of the property is in the flood plain, so it likely will not be developed anytime soon.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Kevin? Moving on to public input, anybody here, since this is a public hearing, anybody here from the public that would like to comment on this zoning action? Is a petitioner here? Nope? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve this and I do have a comment.
Second.
Motion in a second. Commissioner Barth.
So there's no restrictions to the size of the garage you can attach to your house. However, if you built a house and wanted a, you know, 10,000 square foot auxiliary building, you'd have to come in and get a permit for it. And so this is a strategy to allow you to have basically unlimited-sized garages.
The shouse, are you speaking of?
Shouse, yeah.
Yeah.
There's some in Sioux Falls, too.
There's always loophole. All righty. No, I'm not seeing anybody here for public comment. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Kevin. So we have a second meeting to consider adoption of an ordinance establishing the requirements, fees, and regulations for the issuance of alcohol beverage licenses. Morning, Ben.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ben Kite, Auditor's Office. So yes, we are here for the second reading to adopt an ordinance establishing the requirements, fees, and regulations for the issuance of the alcohol beverage license within Minnehaw County. As you may recall, last week, we presented this first reading. We asked for some direction on a few items and we made those changes specifically in section A, where it talks about on-sale or off-sale liquor licenses, the availability of a notice of a new license. So this related to the zone or when we would, when we would come to, to declare the number of allowable liquor licenses for on and off sale and the fees associated with those and other liquor licenses. Recommendation of the commission at that point, where we set May 15th as the date, that would be an annual date we'd come forward, if not before that date on an annual basis. And then the second item related to rezoning requests. So if a applicant had applied for an alcohol license and, but it was contingent upon rezoning the property, how long would we basically allow that rezoning to take place before we would decline license? And we had spoken with the Planning and Zoning Office and they had suggested that four months might be an appropriate time period. So that's what we included in the ordinance. Otherwise, there are no changes from what we presented at the last meeting.
All righty. So this is a second reading. Do we need a public input? Looking for my attorney for a second reading.
I'm sorry, you need what?
Do we need public input for a second reading?
Yes, you offer it, yes.
So, thank you, Ben. Anybody here for public input on this new ordinance? Seeing none, we'll move on to the commission.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion in a second. Any other questions or comments? I have one and I should know the answer to this, but the three-mile perimeter around a municipality, that municipality issues the liquor licenses if they're within three miles? Is that?
Well, that applies to off-sale licenses, right? I think for on-sale, it's, the three-mile doesn't apply, you just have to be outside the city limits. And I'm sure what the, happens within that three miles for off-sale.
Yeah, no off-sale liquor licenses will be issued to any establishment located within three miles of the exterior boundary of an incorporated municipality. So that three miles, are there's no liquor stores or?
Again, off-sale liquor stores. And so I believe the theory underlying this change in legislation is that, yes, it's adequately covered by the municipal store, if such as exists, licensed establishments within the municipalities, so that the county is not competing with the municipalities for off-sale within that zone.
But we would sell it for less.
I think the cost of the liquor license is significantly higher, if I correct, in the city of Sioux Falls as it is in the county. And so that was another reason for the, because otherwise you get on the edge of Sioux Falls and somebody puts a liquor store right there and that licensure fee is so much less than the city of Sioux Falls would be and so it protects them. Am I totally off-base on that line or?
That's another part of that logic, yes.
Okay, I thought the city off-sale was a thousand bucks with 500 and we're at 1,200, correct? Or am I confusing ordinances?
No, I think the city off-sale, I want to say, is 1,500.
1,500.
I think, you know, it wouldn't quote me on that, but we're, we're close in the, in the relative cost for off-sale. But the on-sale is, as Commissioner Heiburger said, much higher. The city of Sioux Falls charges $1.25 per population as determined by the census.
For on-sale.
For on-sale, right. So that's where we get.
I guess my question is, if I wanted to open a liquor store with, outside of Sioux Falls but within the three miles, who do I apply to?
Planning and zoning.
Planning and zoning? Okay.
And if you're outside of the city limits, you can't if you're in that three-mile zone.
Right. We, well, the county cannot issue a off-sale liquor license to anybody within that three-mile limit. I don't know if the municipality.
No, you're not. I don't believe the municipality can issue one either outside of their boundary.
So there's no liquor stores?
Lost if you bought property there and you wanted to put a liquor store because you might be out of luck.
So if you're, if you want to open a liquor store, then three miles of any municipality you can't because there's.
Yeah, for off-sale.
Yeah, for off-sale. That's odd. So, maybe it's just me, but is that in state statute that way or is that our decision?
Yeah, no, the state statute talks to the three-mile limit.
Hmm, interesting. Okay. Motion in a second and I'll call the roll on this one.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Consider a resolution and order of incorporation of Shatter's Fourth Edition Road District. Ben?
Yes. So, Commissioner, we have a application to form a, a road district for Shatter's Fourth Edition Road District. This property is located west of Sioux Falls, a few miles along Highway 38 between 468th and 69th Avenue. The property is owned by one individual that is in the process of developing this property with the intent of subdividing into several parcels and then, then having the road district in place as those new parcel owners come on for them to take responsibility for maintaining their roads in the future. We've received the petition. I think I included a aerial view and a plat map of the property as well, but petition is in, in order. If approved, we would meet with the landowners, do whatever appropriate publications in the papers and, and have an election for this one person and then hopefully proceed. Any questions on that?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
So Ben, I drove by it the other day and there are no houses there. Are some of these lots sold or is there really only one voter?
Yeah, there is really only one voter. He has, there have been no parcels subdivided yet.
So it would have to be like 100% or else zero.
That's correct.
Hope you win if you run. All righty.
If it's 110%, we know something's wrong.
How many? How many lots are in this?
Well, and none, well, he's got like four at this point, but I think you could, you could subdivide those further as well.
I don't know if it matters. How many eligibility's are there? Do we know? I mean, does it?
It's a planned development. There are eight sites.
Okay.
Interesting enough, you know, the state statute does kind of anticipate this, you know, as I think I mentioned in my briefing memo, they anticipate that if there's less, three or less landowners, you know, there's no need for an election of the trustees. So, you know, other locations may have already had this situation where they have one, two, or three individuals who want to form their own road district.
Interesting. All righty, well, I have to give them credit for looking ahead and thinking about this. Did we, I didn't get a motion to approve yet, did I?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. And briefing on an, on an election to form Evergreen Acres Road District.
Yes. So Commissioners, we, on August 17th, we held an election with the property owners from Evergreen Acres to form a road district. You had approved this petition back on June 22nd. The property owners had waited till last Tuesday to have the election, but we were out there. There's 57 property owners, of which we had 29 voters. I think the results were 24 to 5 in favor of the formation of the road district. And they held an election immediately after and elected three trustees for that road district. So this is just a briefing. I will be coming back to you soon to submit an order of incorporation that is required by the state. I didn't have that prepared for us today. Again, this is just a briefing.
Thank you very much, Ben. Five years, I don't think I've seen so much activity in road districts, so.
And I would just note that I have another application that will be coming in next week.
Wow.
Yeah.
All right. Now, moving on to the Ben Kite Show. Consider a motion to accept the Minnehaw County Surplus Property Appraisal Board report and authorize the auditor to publish notice of public auction on September 25th, 2021 at 10:00 a.m.
Yes. So we have had the appraisal board review the eight properties, plus we also had them review our, one commercial property that we own, the former Community Correction Center. But for the tax deed properties, they appraised them, provided us their estimates of what they thought the property's worth. I think I, you should have had the appraisal board report along with whatever comments you might have had included in your packet. We are recommending that you accept that and then accept the minimum bids, which we have listed as the, the amount of the outstanding property taxes on those eight properties. And then, and then we would follow up with publication in the papers, notify the public of the, intend to have a public auction of these. And our intent would be to have that auction in this room. Hopefully, I think we might have a little bit larger crowd. We hope this would be sufficient. I think in the past, we've kind of held it down in the hallways of the administration building, but we're hoping this might be a little more conducive. Any questions on that?
Commissioner Heiburger.
So I'm just gonna talk a little bit about the sales. So there's a minimum bid, which pays the property taxes. And if there's anything above the, above the minimum bid, that money would go into the general fund of the county?
No, it would be a portion, a portion to all the other taxing districts. So the school district would get some portion. If it's in the city limits, the city would get some portion. It's a portioned as it would be any other property tax.
So, but, but if there's anything over and above the property tax, we would, we would split the difference between them on what the value was of that property also.
Right. So if the property taxes due were 20,000 but they paid 50, we take that 30,000 and we'd apportion it to all the other, the county would get some portion of it, school district gets some portion, the city would get some portion.
And who retains, no, I don't want to ask that question. That was the wrong thing to say. And I forgot what I was gonna ask the other question. Thank you.
Okay.
Has this list shrunk any in the last week or so?
It has not. Right? We're expecting individuals to come forward. Obviously, there's, they have. Obviously, there's, they have until the date of the auction to come forward. And actually, they have, you know, I think up to 180 days after the auction to take action to bring it back, but we haven't had any signs of anybody coming forward.
180 days after the auction, they consider?
Yeah, the state statute allows you to take action against that.
Obviously, you're not buying clear title to these properties.
That's correct, yeah. That's why they're, they're sold at such a discount.
Okay, alrighty. Look for a motion and a second.
Motion to approve?
Second, and call the roll.
Benega?
Aye.
Hi Berger?
Aye.
Bart?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Pardon?
Aye, motion carries, five to nothing. Thank you, Ben. And moving on then to consider a resolution to declare certain mobile home distress warrants for unpaid property taxes as uncollectible. Good morning, Chris.
Morning, Chris Swanson, County Treasurer. So South Dakota codified law provides for the presentation to the county commissioners by the county treasurer, all distress warrants returned by the sheriff as uncollectible. So submitted to, for your review are the uncollectible distress warrants that were returned by the sheriff for the 2021 years. So after they're examined by you and if satisfied from any report of the sheriff or treasurer on the facts in his own knowledge, then we can declare the, the warrants can be declared as uncollectible. So that is what we are asking.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Bart?
I just want to talk about this whole issue for a second. It's been percolating every year. We get more of this and I think Joe Bosman knows that you go out there to look for them and they're gone. But it's illegal to move them without a permit. And, you know, I was talking to our auditor about this earlier. If we paid our vehicle registrations next year, like we pay our property taxes, how many of our cars would be here next year when it was time to pay for their license plates? And, and that's what we have with these mobile homes. They're mobile. They're not stick built. And years ago, the industry went to the legislature to get a change because they didn't want to think about it being mobile. But making it like an automobile, you know, you get to drive it. You have to pay your taxes on your, on your house a year later. You get to pay your taxes on your car now. And when you pay your taxes on your house a year later, you don't have to have your house here anymore. And this is a constant issue. And I certainly support the plan to just get rid of the list. But I drove through Baltic the other day, Sunday, and I saw that this one whole trailer park was missing. And I don't know if it's the case, but I heard later that they're going to make it into a golf course. Tell me that the golf course people don't know where those mobile homes went. Tell me that the mobile home operator didn't know where they went. Tell me that the people that live there didn't know where they went. They may not be traceable, but the way we collect taxes on this stuff is baloney.
Commissioner Hager?
Were those trailer horses on this list?
I don't know.
Okay, because I was going to say, I know who, I know who moved them.
It's hard to keep track of them.
Imperfect system, alrighty. So I need a motion to declare them surplus.
I mean, that's my motion.
Second, distress warrants, motion in a second, okay. Let's do that.
Hi Berger?
Aye.
Bart?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye, motion carries. Looking for a motion to declare various highway department vehicles and equipment as surplus and authorize disposal by auction.
Good morning, Commissioners. Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent. In front of you is a list of surplus equipment that the highway department no longer deems as necessary and we're looking to declare them as surplus with one exception. At the bottom on the first page, a 1994 John Deere Gator, I'd like to pull from consideration facilities is interested in using that piece of equipment. If you approve, we're going to work with the auditor's office to remove these items from the assets of the highway department. And we're tentatively scheduled to auction these at Purple Wave on September 28th, pending your approval and us working with the auditors to get this moving.
Commissioner Hager?
I just have one question. I didn't think it was worthy of a phone call. What is this Sterling?
Sterling is a make of a truck like a Freightliner Peterbilt. They're no longer made, which is becoming an issue on getting parts.
Thank you.
I'd make a motion to approve the list as amended.
Second. Motion and a second. Quick question, Steve, are we cleaning house in anticipation of their new building and such?
This is all routine items that have been replaced.
Okay.
And it's just a routine. Sioux Falls used to handle auctions for county vehicles and they no longer do. So you're going to see other departments coming through as well.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to, for the entire list less the 1994 John Deere Gator, correct? Alrighty, and call the roll.
Bart?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hi Berger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye, motion carries.
Consider a motion to declare two equalization department vehicles as surplus and authorize disposal by auction. I don't see anybody here from equalization unless they're running down the hall.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hi Berger?
Aye.
Bart?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye, motion carries.
Consider bid award recommendations and authorize chair to sign an agreement with Canfield Business Interior for the Minnehaha County Furniture Package. Bids are open on August 6th, 2021. Good morning, Mark.
Good morning, Commissioner. Mark Trenz, Facilities Department. So yes, like you said, on the 6th, bids are open publicly for a complete furniture package from Minnehaha County. The bid proposals submitted were comprised of seven bid packages, which included seating, office furniture, systems furniture, desks, auditor's office furniture installation, equalization department furniture installation, State's Attorney and Commission Offices furniture installation, and the State's Attorneys and Commission Offices furniture estimate price. The auditor's office receives bid packages from three local distributors. Pigott was first one. Their bid came in at $426,320.10. Interstate Office was, Office Products was the next low bidder at $285,888.51. And Canfield Business Interiors came in with a low bid at $238,910.31. All three bid proposals were reviewed for accuracy and in compliance with the RFP. And I'm requesting commission approval to authorize the chair to sign a contract with Canfield Business Interiors for $238,901.31 for the Minnehaha County Furniture Package. Are there any questions?
Why was there a $9 change?
What was your question, Cindy?
Why is on, why is there a $9 change? Canfield Interiors was 238,910.31 and then on the bottom, it's accept a bid for 2,38901.31. So which way, which way should it be? That was my, that's more my question.
Sure, sure. It should be the 910, so I'm just going to confirm that here real quick.
We'd make a motion to approve the Canfield Business Interior Package.
Second, motion and a second, questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman? Sorry about that. Just, so is the quality of the material comparable and how much are we bringing from existing buildings over, over there?
So yeah, these, these three distributors are kind of the main, the main players in town and they, that's high quality furniture. So the, the auditor's office, we're going to disassemble and dispose about 75% of that, so they'll use 25% of their existing. Equalization is going to use about half of their existing and then the State's Attorney is going to use about 75% of their existing.
I remember John Glenn saying that when he went, was launched into orbit, he was sitting on hundreds of thousands of parts, all made by the lowest bidder.
It's all up to the technical orders and how they're, and to that point, our architect reviewed this, which gives me a great level of comfort because we've worked with Karen Muchelsknaus and been confident in her ability and the fact that we've had somebody else look at it too, gives me comfort, so.
Correct, Integra did also review it.
Alrighty, good, good. Do you have a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
I think Commissioner Ben, Benega already did.
Already did that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Down to liaison reports. Any liaison reports? Commissioner Hager?
I have one. This last week, I attended the conference in Oklahoma on building a crisis response continuum in your community, was founded by the Helmsley Charitable Trust. The partners that put it on were South Dakota Association of County Commissioners, UJS, which I would say was probably more of the lead county commissioners, were pretty low on the totem pole. Department of Social Services, the South Dakota Sheriff's Association, South Dakota Police Association, South Dakota Council of Community, Community Behavioral Health, Crime and Justice Institute. And our, we have basically had three focuses. We focused on the crisis call centers. We focused on the mobile crisis response teams and what they look like across the state. Obviously, ours is way different from somebody who lives in the middle of South Dakota that has much less calls than we do. And then we talked about receiving facilities. Just a couple of things that I pulled out of that conference was, they said about 10% of our law enforcement time is taken up with mental health responses. And a, a new program that has been rolled out, I believe nationwide, is the 988 number. It is already active in Minnehaha County and across the state. So if you have, if you have needs for help, which is just basic help, I need, I need to go nowhere to find, you know, I don't know, a car or whatever, you can call 211. Those are your help people. You call 911 if you have a medical emergency. You call 988 if you have a mental health issue. The state will be rolling out an extensive marketing campaign on this. They have a significant amount of money that they will be trying to educate the public to no longer call 911 or 211 when you have a medical, or when you have a mental health issue to be dealt with. We already have dedicated staff here in Minnehaha County that are taking those calls. In fact, somebody in the room said, I tried calling it and they actually respond. It is, it's, it's there. And they will be working towards having that separate, completely separate from like 211. And so when you call, you're going to get local people helping you. They also will be taking all the suicide calls. There was, in the presentation, there was comments that it would hopefully decrease our 911 calls because the number of night, of number of mental health calls go to 911 and then sometimes they're referred to 211. Sometimes 211 gets them and refers them to 911. So that's to be seen which direction that goes with. I did speak with the sheriff a few minutes afterwards and he wasn't sure we'd have a huge impact in Minnehaha County just because we do use 211, but still remains to be seen. We had breakout sessions after each section of our conference and with our community, they actually set us in our community collaborations. And we had very good turnout in our area. Basically, it was mostly Minnehaha County. But we had really good representation and I think came up with some good plans for what some of our holes and gap in services are. We do have a mobile crisis team. We do now have the link, which has been huge. So what's the next step? We talked about some of those places where our gaps are and how we could possibly improve some of those gaps. And so it was really a good conference and I think we actually accomplished some pretty good stuff, so.
Thank you, Commissioner. You know, 911, 988, I would say that if you're having a crisis, there's probably no wrong number to call. Pick it up and dial, so. Other liaison reports, Commissioner?
Last night, we had a planning and zoning meeting and it was a pretty slack meeting, but an issue that again has raised itself, we had to wait for a quorum from the Dell Rapids Planning Commission. They were first up and we waited a few minutes and then we put them aside and went on with the city of Sioux Falls Planning Commission. And, you know, 30 minutes later, finally, they, Dell Rapids got their quorum. And, you know, as we add communities to the joint jurisdiction, like Brandon is talking about, it's going to be an issue, you know, if they're not able to produce their commissioners on a timely basis. So then we, we had three separate presentations then on the medical marijuana issue for our, our areas. And they were all passed without any revision. That said, it was not unanimous, at least on the county planning board. There was a suggestion to make it more than 1,000 feet. That was by Doug Odie. He didn't make a motion, but he voted against the, it based on that. And interestingly, we had a routine, normally routine thing to move four eligibilities around an acreage and we voted it down. The proponent didn't show up and it's like a half a mile from the, from the Bowdine Dairy. And we didn't want to move a bunch of people that are now going to complain to that, that location. Plus, there was an opponent there who was going to be the next door neighbor to, you know, four more houses. So we voted it down. They can appeal, they can bring it back, whatever. But the quorum, the medical marijuana, the four eligibilities, those were really, we were out of here by 8:10. And unfortunately, I spent a bunch of time talking in the parking lot, got home at 8:40. But a separate issue is, I got a call about a dry well near a dairy on the west side of the county. And the Fellow's Well went dry after the dairy began, began operation. And Scott referred them to the D A N E R, whatever the new acronym is. Apparently, the state has a, a way of ensuring water rights for people, so no further answer on that. But I also went to East Dakota Water Development District and four of their test sites on the Skunk Creek area were dry and they have never been dry before. So it's kind of a, you know, you can blame the dairy, you can blame the drought, you can blame somebody, but it, there's also the possibility that it's just a shallow well that, you know, they hit water at 60 feet and dug it to 62 or something. But one of the other farmers on the planning commission last night said they feel like some of the towns are sucking water from their aquifer and their water is going down also. So it's, water is always an issue to fight about.
Already reimbursed us for the roof, less the deductible obviously, but they also included over $30,000 worth of claim value that we were anticipating and getting. So that was a very positive relationship issue. Just preliminarily, the Sioux Empire Fair will be reporting their financial status in probably a few weeks, but the fair itself, other than the first night, when they had to close down the expo stage, if you will, or the grandstand stage, because of lightning, the rest of the evenings were very well attended and the fair revenue, I believe, will be up.
Excellent. Okay. My only two, tomorrow, Wednesday, I have a link board meeting and a chamber of commerce board meeting, back to back. I'm reporting on them early because we don't have a meeting next week as a county commission and our next meeting will be on September 7th, the day after Labor Day. So I'll probably forget everything that I had tomorrow, so we'll see what happens. Any new business? Any old business? We have no executive session unless something's come up in the last few minutes, alrighty. So look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion in a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.